The United States of America. And we give the legal export standards. By nature, under God, individual liberty and judgment.
You, welcome to meeting.
Yeah, first thing I need to do is approve of the minutes from uh. Meetings, September twentieth meeting and October fourth meeting.
I read the revisions, I thought they were fine. Just happy to see that a third of the meeting actually happened. Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of September twentieth and October fourth.
I'll second that.
From the motion by Chris, second by Ken. Approve the minutes. Uh, of September twentieth and October fourth. All those in favor? You, uh, department reports.
And. Um. We are. Full winter crap mode. Most of the sanders have been gone through, a couple are with the mountain ready. Through piles of wings, hydraulics. Ready, um, finer detail, but uh. Once we get everything geared up, we'll then transition back into shoulder work and ditch work provided the weather cooperate. Cover to the transfer station is uh. Putting a burden on us, but we're getting through it. Um, honestly, better than I thought we would. Uh, my crew has stepped up and volunteered to cover the hours. Um, without any issues, which is great. I thank them for that. Did a couple interviews this week, uh. Do the scheduling of Lori and myself, we're gonna try or and then Justin, I believe, we try and finish them up next week and. Hopefully have some candidates to uh operate some employment to and go from there.
How many, how many applications do you have?
That's six total.
Cool. Excellent.
That's all I had.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm not gonna ramble on like I usually, because I don't have a whole lot, but we um. We were able to secure um. Two grants. One through Maine Municipal Association and the amount of three thousand dollars. To uh. Upgrade the lighting on Kirk's Cruiser. His, his is the last one that um we need to uh. So we got three thousand dollars from them. We also um got a matching grant through um. Bureau of Justice Assistance for um fifteen hundred dollars to three thousand dollar total grant, but comes in fifteen hundred dollar increments on that. And um, that's for um. Upgrade of our body worn cameras. Specifically designed for that, that project, so. Get those two grants secured, um, all the paperwork's been filed. I think Justin has a copy of the MMA. Contract.
Yes, okay. Um. Chief, what, what will that do? The, the body cameras?
We have, we have body cameras in place now, uh. But as they age, you know, we got a couple that are five years old. So this is gonna replace the, the older ones with the newer versions.
And. Sir.
We're required by, or required under statute to record all interviews, all contact with. Traffic starts, any serious crimes, so. They, they work, these body cameras work in conjunction with our mobile cameras in the cruisers, so if we're outside the cruiser. It gets recorded on the, the mobile. Uh, unit in the cruiser, so. Um, it's all part, that, it's all part of the discovery motion on trials. The, the defense has access to all our. Videos regarding their client, so. Uh. It's just a, a way of, of keeping up and keeping uh. Ahead of the changes in the technology without the town having to expend any town money. That's all I have. Any questions?
You, you said the MMA grant is for lighting on the cruisers?
Correct. It's to update the lights in Kirk's Cruiser is um. Olivia's Cruiser and Dana's Cruiser and the. Air Cruiser that Zach has now full time are all, have all been updated with all new equipment. Current last one to be updated.
It says. It's a safety grant, it's through the, it's through the insurance pool. And they offer it uh to municipalities twice a year, you can apply. It's not just for uh police activities, a lot of it is slip, trip and fall, so. Uh, in public works could get spikes for their shoes or mats for in front of doorways to keep people from falling in. Supposed to turn away insurance claims, so it hits fits because it's lights, so it keeps them safe, so that people see them and they're pulling people out.
Thank you.
Keith, before you go, uh, was there. Can we follow up with the beach? Um, nonsense, shenanigans, where, where are we on that, or has, has anything happened?
There's nothing, nothing more has happened since the last event, once they took all the equipment out of there. Um, we've had no more issues down there.
Okay.
They took the sun away.
Keith Roy is on Zoom. Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, good evening. Um, just a few things for the fire department, we had our. Open house, sparky breakfast and fall harvest sale on this past Saturday. Uh, weather was beautiful, I had a great turnout. Um. We ended up raising over thirteen hundred dollars for our Richard P. Milligan Scholarship, so that was good news. Uh, also this past week, we went into the school and did the fire prevention week activities. Taught safety lessons to over a hundred and forty students, pre-K through second grade. Ended up smoke detectors, um. Again, had a lot of positive comments from both staff and, and, and the students. So that was good. Uh, we're right in the middle now of collecting coloring pictures for our coloring contests. Um, we'll announce the winners next week and right now tentatively, we're scheduled for Friday, October twenty seventh to. Give rides to school for twelve youngsters on two fire apparatus that day. Uh, next public event, it's gonna be Halloween, it's coming right up in a couple of weeks, um. We're in good shape for that, it'll be Tuesday, October thirty first, uh, we'll open up our station doors at four o'clock. We usually go right till about eight o'clock. Uh, our auxiliary will be serving hot dogs, hamburgers. Hot corn, hot chocolate, hot coffee. Uh, so, love, love to see everybody stop by and see all the kiddos uh dressed up, trick or treating, it's always a good time. Uh, training this month, uh, for this week and next week, we'll be going over gas meters. And um, the sixteen life safety initiatives when commanded in a fire scene. And the last thing I got is, uh, I won't be present at the next board meeting, I will be flying out to Arizona with Captain Rennie and Ayesha Nesbit. Um, all three of us got approved through that grant through Rutgers University, and we appreciate you guys supporting us to, to take that trip. Maybe next year I'll get Chief Arlen to come with us. I have an application for him to sign up for the fire department.
I want to go on this year, man.
That's all I got.
Next year it'll probably be Northern Michigan.
Yeah. Any questions regarding the fire department?
I have one, Dan, a few months ago, we talked about some ISO certification for insurance purposes, anything ever happen with that?
No, no, the gentleman that had reached out to me, uh, never reached out when he said he would, and I. Got sidetracked and haven't followed up with him. Um. I'm not sure what their time schedule is, if they're just uh, middle of summer, they like to do those, those tests. Uh, certainly, we, we can do it in the fall if necessary. I'm, I'll make a note to reach out to him, just to see, uh, you know, tickle his ear and see if, see if there's any. Any way we can try to get that done before winter, if not, it'll probably be next summer now.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Extra select board report.
See, while Kimberly Brooks no longer works for the town of Monmouth, um, Jessica will be taking over as the clerk and doing the election. This election, November, she's been training for it, so she should be all set, she's confident. Um, we're gonna be posting for a deputy tax collector, hopefully we'll make it more. More uh, that position focused, so that the lien process is more clean and we don't have. You know, like I said, we were missing some green cards and didn't always have the paperwork, so hopefully this next person, we will. We'll make that clear that that's a, a major part of their responsibility is to make sure that stuff is, is um, on track. Lori's been helping out, out front, because Dolores happens to be on vacation. Um, today and tomorrow, so it's really Jessica there, so you'll see Lori at the front counter for the next couple of days, I thank her for doing that. Um. The Cocknowagan Dam project is complete, and the final walkthrough is tomorrow morning with the engineering team, everything looks good, we don't expect there to be any. Maybe a few punchless items, but nothing major, so. Damn should be able to be getting close, I just found this out today, Dan, so. Um, we don't have to be there, I told the engineer that, you know, if he's good. We're good, and if, if there's any questions about, so it's very similar, but if there's any questions how to operate it, you can call him and he'll come out and show you how to use it. Um. Like Dan said, we got applicants for the transfer station, and one of them. Um, Lori and I might poach to be the custodian, much to Dan's chagrin, but he seems like he may be. A better fit for one of our, you know, to do our maintenance custodial work, but we'll see if, if he's interested in that.
How many hours a week is that custodial?
It's thirty-two, it's full, it's a full-time town office. Position. Um, and I reached out to an engineering firm, TRC, and a, and uh, in Augusta. Um. They just called me back again today, Dan, so when you get back, I'll set up a time that me and you can have him. They're gonna come and give us an estimate on what it might be to do a five, ten-year study. Or outlook on what the transfer station needs might be, whether it be equipment, size enlargement. Um. Facilities such as bathrooms, running water, all that, so I'm gonna look to get a quote for that, so as we move into the budget, you can decide whether you wanna. Move that in to be something that we consider for next year.
When you, when you discuss that with them, could you consider? Asking them about scales as well?
Sure, yep. Um. I think that's all I heard.
Yeah, I have one more thing I wanna bring up, sorry, this, I just, just came out of my email, I don't know if you're. You know, we are, that they're gonna be closing Main Street on the twenty-fourth. For railroad work.
That's the.
That's like six days from now.
You knew it was coming, you knew it was coming.
It says that they're gonna be working on Main Street on the twenty-fourth, this will be a two-day closure while they do work on the tracks, so. Uh, it just came up in my email, so.
They don't, they don't tend to play that.
Yeah.
Twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I mean, that's what happened in Auburn, but they, a lot of people didn't even know it was happening in Auburn, you know, the town, the city didn't even know. They were just there and everything was closed down, but it's the railroad and it's, they can do what they want on their timetable, so. But, you know, I, I saw those. Um. Well, the tracks have been laying there for a couple of weeks, but then yesterday appeared the pile of ties, so. You knew it was in short order, on the horizon, so.
What are they gonna be doing?
Oh, oh, down at the end of the lake.
In the cold, right, San Diego.
Yeah. Yeah, Main Street. But they had a thing in the newspaper that that was fifty years ago, the derailment at the end of the lake.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, so I had a question on um. The uh. Transfer station. Because. Uh, Auburn. Just redid theirs and they're redoing their uh recycling. And they're gonna restart roadside recycling, where they hadn't been doing it, but they are only allowing. Paper, cardboard. And number one, two and six, I can't remember the exact numbers, but you know, like one, two and five, three types of plastic, no glass, no metal. So is that something that we're going to, you know, if that stuff is just getting. Picked out and thrown to. Would it lighten our load to not have tin cans and glass in there, so?
I'm hoping to have EcoMain come to your next meeting, and then you can ask them. Whether that would.
And start a new education process, so. I mean, I've started doing that myself. Not putting certain things in the recycling, because. Why?
Yeah, cost.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, that was an interesting article about. Happening in Auburn, so.
So, ne- next meeting then for.
That's my, yeah, that's, that's my hope, yeah, we've been kind of planning which days are good for them versus us.
Yeah, I mean, I noticed. The, in the first quarter, we expended like, I don't know, it was like six or eight thousand dollars to EcoMain. And if some of that, if that's the quarterly rate that we're spending with them. Then. Sounds to me like some of that, we might have some savings. If, if we're able to. Pair it down to. Only the stuff there's a market for.
If you have any specific uh data you want them to bring, just let me know ahead of time, because they, they probably won't be able to. You know, do it off the top of their head, but they can certainly. Query, they know exactly what we're dropping in their facility, they know, so if you were.
We could have like a three or four year history of what our volume is with them. In both. Weight and dollars. That would be super helpful. And then if we could get an understanding of what the transportation cost to them is, is that a separate thing that we? The town just pays the order?
Yeah, we pay for the transportation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and that's all the way to Portland rather than to Auburn.
Right.
So I'm assuming. It's more expensive.
Yeah, it's a separate line item on the invoice.
Right, so if we could, for that meeting, if we could get an understanding of what. Those expenses are.
When uh, maybe you know, when, when Trudy was here. Uh, maybe even, and maybe when Donna. It was here, we used to get a uh. Pretty much, maybe we'd get a, a report card kind of thing. On Eco.
Oh yeah, but the purity of the, how, how.
And we meet standards and we always did, but we never had a fine, because we were.
Well, I think it's kind of telling that we're not. Are we, are we still getting that?
Do they still send those to you?
Never sent one.
Yeah, so it's kind of telling that they're not. Really paying attention to that, because. What that says is that. There's no market, they're doing something else with the waste. So it doesn't have to be, they don't have to be as careful. About. Holding people to standards for. For second. Um, do we know when uh? Are, we're gonna get caught up on the audits? We have an audit.
I do not have an engagement date from RKO yet, it's something that we were just, we just talked about this last week, actually. Well, I thought they were coming in October, so I just, I'll just reach out to Casey and see if they're still on track to do that.
If you get back to us by next meeting, that'd be helpful. And uh, do we have? While we're on the topic of transfer station, uh, do we have a plan for the twenty twenty-four transfer station stickers?
Yeah, I ordered them.
Awesome, and do they have? Is the adhesive on the right side?
It will be, yes.
And is there a unique identifier on them, or is it just a Monmouth? Monmouth, Wales.
It said, it's a, it says Monmouth, Wales. Uh, on them. Uh, there's two separate colors, Justin and I had a conversation. We're gonna provide a different color sticker to the Wales. Uh, town office to hand out, just so we can differentiate. Uh. Where they're from and.
My ask for that was because I'm trying to leave the options open for you folks as we start talking about the beach. You decide that you only wanna let residents, it would be easy to identify them by the sticker, but if Wales has the same color.
Yes.
Then we won't know which is which, so just to leave your options open, I asked him to make two colors for Wales and Monmouth, depending on. How that conversation comes out, so we don't, that, so that was the, that's the idea behind it.
Think what we were asking was, is there gonna be a number? I, I see that Sharon Siegel is on, on, on the uh. On the. On the call here, so. Um, I thought you were getting that message.
Yeah, I, I have no idea if she's on for a reason, like she's, she's on here.
Which, uh, she's just a administrator for. Uh, you. Originally, when we had thought about the transfer station, we thought about putting a unique identifier on it, so that we could track individual. Vehicles with a. A number, a number that would. Uh, ensure that there was. Uh, less chance of shenanigans where people were. Loaning their permit to somebody else, because it's mounted on a. Piece of plastic in the glove box.
And in the end, it was just decided to keep it simple, because it's, it had been a discussion going on for three, four months. So we decided to just. Put the stickers on and everybody was just gonna accept the fact that if a few people made it in and threw stuff, it was, it was an acceptable. Amount of loss, I think is what was the, was the conclusion there, and that's why we didn't end up doing that. Plus, it's something that we in the office and the transfer station people have to keep track of somehow to know that, you know. Uh, Chris's sticker is number three hundred and five, and we have to track that. If she lost it, we'd have to update the spreadsheet, so that it was now one thousand two hundred and six, and it just didn't seem like it was worth the administrative hassle. To figure out whose sticker belonged.
Yeah. I, I hear you, um.
Considering the old process was a piece of paper that you could have photocopied by going, by sticking a card, and you could have gotten all the free stuff too.
So, so, right, right, so much of this is about. Uh, you know. Uh, doing the best you can to, to plug the leaks in the system. And I don't think that anyone said you actually had to keep track of the numbers, but the fact that there's a number there. Might actually dissuade someone from. Loaning it out.
You still have the opportunity. They were handing them out at the transfer station, um, which I got one when we first instituted the thing, and then when I went to register my truck, I got another one. Um. So if you ask for one and you show, you know. You don't have it on your car and you ask for a transfer station, they're gonna give you one if you show them your registration or whatever, right?
Yeah, all they, I told them is just, if somebody asks you for a sticker, just verify residence, you're Monmouth or Wales, as long as they prove that, you hand them a sticker.
Yeah, all you can do.
So then you get a second one if you really wanted to be. Well, if you're third or fourth.
Third or fourth, we're depending on the owner system somewhat.
At some point, I suppose you're right.
We are doing the best we can with the situation.
Everybody knows police chiefs have lots of.
Stickers, and we had, there were numbers up.
Yeah.
It was like, we got the loan numbers.
You'll get one down, guys, who get one?
I want a number two.
Apparently the select board had way too much time on its hands.
You knew you really made it then, right?
Wait a second, the legislature is all getting.
That's it.
Because when then, somebody dies, they.
Only, only if your name is John Mark.
Yeah.
Uh, it was the district number, so I was, I was. Uh, pretty low on the totem pole at number eighty-two.
Uh, the other, anyway, we were doing a select board report. Then on to public comments.
Oh, I have one, sorry, I have one more.
One.
Actually, I have two. Um, we talked about redoing the uh marijuana survey for the November election. That's on your radar screen?
It's not on. I wasn't making the survey, but I, I was under the impression that Reagan was gonna make another one for you.
Okay.
Uh, because I don't have the questions from the first time, she made the first one too. I don't, I don't have an electronic version of. Any of those questions. Or I can ask her for it, certainly.
Yeah, could you coordinate with her and make sure that?
Yeah.
That that happens? We, we haven't had that conversation. Specifically about redoing it. I'm sure it's just a copy paste type of deal. And then the last one is um, just some uh. Uh, an FYI from the Economic Development Committee. Uh, we have not yet responded to the. Developers request for a credit enhancement agreement, we're waiting for that developer to get us some information before we can. Actually, uh. Make a decision. And ha- have a meeting and, and make a decision, make a recommendation. So, um, so I'll keep you informed. When he gets back to us with some information. Um, the others, note, I, I spoke with Reagan. This week. And the, there's been a hiccup, sounds pretty minor, but a small hiccup in our revision to the CMP TIF. Uh, language revision. So the voters. Just FYI, voters approved. Uh, new priorities and TIF language. And we submitted our application, the. Uh, Department of Economic.
Development.
Community development at the state of Maine, DECD, there we go. And so we finally heard back from. The person who's responsible for approving our application at the state level. Um, the hiccup is. That when that CMP district was initially approved. It was approved. Uh, with a, uh. At, an amount, uh acreage amount that was slightly above what the state said. Was the maximum amount. And so the new DECD TIF person would like. Us to pair one or two parcels off of. The CMP TIF district, so that we can be exactly at. The, the two percent.
Two percent.
That is maximally allowed, it was two point oh six percent, they said okay initially. Anyway. We've got a.
It's sixty acres or something in that range.
We've gotta come up with. Uh, a couple of parcels that will bring us back below the threshold. I don't, they're, they're not saying we need to go back to the voters to approve that, it's just a simple select board. Decision. Reagan is uh, gonna talk with our. Assessor Donna about what the possibilities are. Um, there are a couple of very large parcels, I think underneath the CMP lines. That don't add a whole lot of. Value to the district and are fairly large in acreage. So those are kind of prime candidates for consideration. But it's a hiccup, not a showstopper.
Back to uh, public comment. Uh, then on to. Consider a proposal from the uh. IOV Community Planning and Consulting to provide consulting services. Comprehensive planning committee.
But Steve went back to the individual and they're willing to start with the money that we have and then. Finish with. Um. Whatever we might raise at town meeting. I think that was the question you all asked, so.
Yep.
So it would be next June, that they would be willing to wait, we don't have to go in March? Or we, we have a special town meeting in.
It's ten thousand dollars there, she's okay to get started with the money that we have available, and then. If, if they use that up, I assume that they'll have to pause and wait for the, for the rest of the money to come through.
It gets scaled back initially, it was a fifty thousand dollar.
Yeah, I think it's in the thirty something, forty-one rate, I was gonna say thirty-eight, but yeah, forty.
Thirty-one is what.
Oh, thirty-one.
Yeah.
Like there were some items, like I pointed out, like setting up a website, we don't, you know, maybe that's a little much. Probably a twenty-five thousand dollar ask would probably be enough to make sure that we had enough to. This is a little more that we need.
Yeah.
We're all set for that.
I make a motion, we, um. Prove the proposal for IOV Community Planning and Consulting to get started with our. Ten thousand. I think seven hundred dollars or something like that. Um, for updating the, um. Comprehensive plan. For the town.
Second.
We have a motion by Chris, second by Ken. To, uh. Prove the proposal from the, uh, from all that. You got that? For the cost here, comprehensive, all those in favor. Thank you. And next is to consider the updated transfer station picking controls.
We basically just took out the parts that Joe objected to, right? We didn't change much else, so.
Uh, do we have an implementation date, assuming we approve this tonight?
Uh, I don't know. I think it's going to depend on having staff down there that we can count on on a regular basis, having them know what they're doing. But I guess I'd leave that to Dan to, when he can get people hired and trained.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to wait until I have a new staff on board. And try to roll it all in.
And, uh. Assuming we approve these rules tonight, how, how quickly can you turn a sign around to. Officially post them?
Well, I don't think I'd want to put the sign out there until we knew we were rolling it out and the staff was there.
Sure.
I'm, I'm still waiting on boat launch signs and pavilion signs. There just seems to be a huge delay. Signs, I would make on those in three plus months, so. Not confident I can have this, even on a sign anytime soon, so.
We could certainly order them.
Yeah, I'll order them.
I make a motion, we approve the amended picking rules. That were part of our packet.
Okay.
Those are motion by Ken, second by. Yeah, Mark, to approve the. Updated, uh, transfer station picking rules. All those in favor. Thank you.
One, one point of clarification, uh, folks will be able to pick metal if they want to, uh, buy these rules at all. No metal. Can they take spare parts off of a lawnmower?
You allow one thing, it opens up Pandora's box for others. Metal is about the only thing. Well, they got, no picking, we allow tires, TVs, propane tanks, batteries. Trash or recycle bins regardless. Oh, isn't that?
I think you took metal out.
Fine, it's a metal out, so yeah, they can have at it.
Okay.
But they can't go inside the.
Well, they can't go in the dumpster.
Yeah, go in the dumpster.
No dumpster.
But, and I'm going to have to give my employees discretion on telling somebody that if they climb over three pieces of metal to get to a garden tractor. Or something and they may have to be told now out of, that's fine. I know this liability is supposedly lifted, but.
No climbing.
Well, and also if they're, you know, loading up their, their vehicle. Because it's the one thing that we actually do get something for at the transfer station, so.
Well, again, that was. Maybe you had. You know. I can't have a, I can't have a policy of seventeen line items for the metal area. What we do don't allow is why we. Well, as you guys, guys want them to pick metal, they can pick metal. It's.
Damn. If it causes a problem, we'll address it. Try it, see how it goes. Okay.
Then on to, uh. Your, uh, warning bids for the old, uh. BPW equipment.
Okay, so I didn't open this. Because I know at the last meeting there was concern. That it wasn't put in the advertiser. That's not our normal practice. It's usually put on MMA and then. On the town website. That's how we have done these. If you wanted and it was too late to get it in the advertiser before they were due to be open. So if you want to wait and put them in there, we can do that. They're not open, but if you want to, we'll have to open them here because I didn't open them. Depending what you are comfortable with. I can have Dan open them if you're comfortable with moving forward. If not, we can wait.
I'm okay with opening them and then if there's anything left, then we can put out a second notice, so.
Want to do the honors, Dan?
Certainly.
You can get the stuff out of your yard, maybe. Don't need to open them, read them aloud or just open them. Yeah, if you want, just be, and then if they want to award them tonight, they can. If they want to wait, they can wait.
I've got one bid labeled storage trailers. This is from Jeff Kemp for five hundred dollars. Those are the two, uh, box trailers at the Public Works Garage.
So the first bid was for how much?
Five hundred dollars.
They're both for five hundred?
Yes, yeah, that is a pair.
A pair for five hundred, not five hundred each.
Correct, the. However you want to say it. Uh, the next, this is one bid for the transfer station bins. Those are the old metal. Art recycling bins out behind. Uh, this bid is from Jeff Kemp as well, uh, for three hundred dollars for the three transfer station bins that are there. Want to talk about those now and then do the vent track, which I have two bids on.
Yep.
Those are the only bid you have for those.
Those are the only bits I have for those two items. I'm, I'm intimate with their condition. I think that's more than adequate.
Considering the fact that we don't have to pay to have them haul the way.
It would cost me more to load them up and haul them to the metal facility, uh, and, and the bid specifies that it, the. Winning bidder is responsible for removing the items.
How do, we have two equal bids, so.
No, no, this is two separate items.
The same gentleman.
Two different items.
Yeah.
And I thought there was, so, okay, all right, I got it. I make a motion, we approve. What is it? The, the.
Trailers and recycle bins.
The trailers and recycle bins that we award, uh, the, the, uh. We award, uh, purchase or the sale, we award the sale, uh, based on our. Bidding to, to Mr. Kemp.
I'll second that.
Sort of the motion by Ken, second by Chris. To, uh. Prove the, uh, sale of those, uh. Two items.
Trailers and recycle bins.
Uh, to, uh, Jeff Kemp, all those in favor. You.
Thank God.
I have two bids for the vent track.
What's the vent track?
That's the combination mower, snow blower, sweeper. Machine that the trackless sidewalk machine replaced. Do not want to cut myself in front of the entire town.
Different piece of paper.
Lauren Smith of Littlemore Falls has a bid of three thousand twenty-two dollars. On the vent track and the attachments. Okay. This is a bid from Ronald Clement of Monmouth. Bid of ten thousand one hundred and one dollars for the vent track and all the implements.
There he is, right there.
There we go. I make a motion. He accept the bid of Mr. Clement of Monmouth. In the amount of.
Ten thousand one hundred and one dollars.
Ten thousand one hundred and one dollars.
And. My, I'll just state that from my market research, that bid is right in line with the value. So that is an appropriate bid. My perspective.
I'll second that.
Oh, you've made a motion. Ken made a motion, Chris seconded it to, uh, prove the. Ronnie Clement's bid for, uh. All that track. So, all those are favored.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, they go into, just want me to get these for the. Spillaneous revenue. Yeah, I, I actually I'll take him because she, she should be coming here.
Our next is to consider approving and, uh. Sign a release deed for one ninety-two Academy Road.
This is, this is normally something that I take care of because you've authorized me to do it, but the, the attorney involved in this was uncomfortable with that, so I said. Instead of going back and forth between our attorney and spending all that money, I just said I'd bring it to you. This is usually something I would take care of, but if you want to approve, this is a release deed. Basically, they've, they've paid that they're going to have a transaction, a closing on Friday. They're going to pay us. Our back taxes so that their closing can move forward. This is, this is something that. We've taken care of multiple times with other transactions, but. They preferred to have your signatures on this instead of mine, so.
This is right, right across the street from me.
Yep, one ninety-two.
Who's in train?
Uh, Peter Mills.
Yeah, not you.
Paul Mills, sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
You're not the guy that runs the turnpike.
You need a motion to approve this.
Yes, if you could, please.
I make a motion, we approve. The release deed for one ninety-two Academy Road map thirty-four lot.
Second.
That's a motion by Ken, uh, second, and that, Mark, to, uh. Sign and approve the release deed for one ninety-two Academy Road. All those in favor. You. Next is to consider the fiscal year twenty-five budget schedule.
Kind of go, you want to go through this for. Anybody who doesn't have it in front of them. But we already went, I already, um. We're going to go through the, the process with the department heads on November fourteenth. They have already seen the schedule, so they know it's coming. The budgets are due to me on December fourth. First draft of the budget and the meeting about what your priorities are will be on the thirteenth of December. January tenth, it'll be public safety, police, fire, uh, ambulance. January twenty-fourth will be public works in the transfer station. February seventh, recreation and. Culture, the, the Compton Hall Library and Recreation. Um, March sixth will be the final draft review in the capital budget. Twentieth of March will be the budget public hearing and April third will be the day that you sign the warrant for the. Election. You have any, if you want that to be changed at all, just let me know. Very similar to last couple of years, I think.
I make a motion, we, um, approve the fiscal year twenty-five budget, budget schedule.
Second.
Uh, so this is motion by Chris, second by Ken to. Approve the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty twenty-five budget schedule. All those in favor. Thank you. And next is the warrant number eight for this year.
Yes, we didn't print ours. We have an attorney here to make sure we're doing it right. We don't want Mr. Mills to be upset again.
Before we get into the warrant, um, uh, amounts and items, um. We had some confusion at the last meeting, you, you might have noticed, uh, where we were. Uh, reviewing accounts but not checks. And I just wanted to ask for some clarity. We've got, I don't know, half a dozen different CMP accounts.
Yep.
And we were only reviewing ones that were above a thousand dollars initially, until I pointed out that. Uh, we should be, you know, the intent of actually putting all of the. Warrant item amounts on the public record is so that. Um, we're keeping track of the cash flow and the, you know, the large, large amounts that are being paid out. And so, just for the purpose of clarity. Uh, have we been reading accounts or have we been reading checks when we. Clarify for the public?
Couldn't tell you on a regular basis because the way that, the way that the accounting firm handles it is. Department heads all submit their own invoices and they do it throughout the period. From when this meeting ends to the next one.
Right.
When they are working on our town, they process what needs to be processed at that time as they go in. They don't, they don't do it all like at once. So if there's, um. I do most of the utility billing, so usually that's kind of done at the same time, but if, um. For example, if Dan were to go somewhere twice over, if, if he were to get two invoices over that period and put one at the beginning and one. On Monday, right before they process, they may be processed separately. Uh, just because that's how they receive them and that's how they. We basically take all the invoices, scan them and put them in a drop box online and then they pick them up and they process them as they go through. Most of the invoices, if they're, if they're sort of sent in at the same time, they're. They're clumped together. So like a lot of times CMP is kind of expensive and. So is some of the other ones, but I can't guarantee you at any given time that. If he put two invoices through or the chief did for the same entity. Separated by a two-week period, I can't guarantee you that those are, those are coming up. Um. Right, combined when I read off the number. I mean, I can try to make an effort when I'm looking here, if I see CMP for nine hundred and one for a thousand. Fifteen hundred, I can try to look at that and look, I've never really paid much attention to it, to be honest, but.
True. That would be helpful. And, um, Chris also mentioned at the last meeting that there's a portion of our electric bill that's. Been disputed or not being paid. Is the supply, do we get things worked out with the supplier?
I don't think I said that. I think that CMP. We pay a CMP bill, but then we pay a bill to Constellation or whoever it is for the supply. So there's delivery.
Two pieces to our, to our bill. So if, if it says Constellation, when I, if I were to read Constellation, that's the supplier, that's the solar company in Texas. And, and then CMP is the distribution.
And, and a couple of. I don't know, maybe three or four meetings ago, you said that there was some sort of confusion over constellations. Uh, building during the transition because they wanted to build separately.
They wanted to build separately and for a period of time CMP was putting the Constellation portion, which they used to pass on for us. A constellation. So, so there was a period of time where I was holding up some bills and I think Mark met, I noticed that the. That the electric bills were really high for a while. It's because they finally sorted it out. I refused to pay it twice, so. Uh, when they finally took it off the CMP side, when it fell off of that one, I paid. Also, some of those were for three months worth of charges because I wasn't paying them.
Okay, so, so we're up to speed now. We got all the ins and outs worked out.
Yes, as far as I know. Yeah, the Constellation charges are no longer showing up on the CMP bills. I get two, I get two bills for every building now.
Okay, and, and we're up to speed with Constellation and the expenditure there.
Yes, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
And then there, the, for the pay period, it's, there's. And then there, for this pay period, it's, there's B bills and there's Constellation.
Yeah.
Navistic Cook Lake Improvement Association, $2,500. Blue Rock Earth, uh, Earthworks, transfer station transport, 2,970. Columbia Classic Cars Police Department repairs, 1,102. Diane Signs and Service, stickers for the, uh, transfer station, 1,175. Dires Soda Blasting Academy Project, 4,672. Eco Main, 1,838. GDI Services Municipal Janitorial Services, 3,118. Criminal Industries Waste Disposal, 5,895. HP Fairfield Public Works Equipment Repairs, 1,671. Fire Department Testing on the hoses, 6,253, IIA Fire Department Testing. Civic Valley Humane Society, 1,835. And Technology Group, 2,060 for IT Support Services. Main Waste Energy, 4,706. Nickerson and O'Day, 145,000, oh 98, Academy Project. Connor Chevrolet Buick, is this for you, Dan?
Yes.
1,073, you didn't have a Paul's Design Project Academy Project, 1,225. Sydney Bose Postage, 2,527. Uh, myself reimbursement for recent, uh, travel to MMA and for the, uh, ICMA Conference, 1,969. Royer Advisors and Accountants, that's our business services, 6,967. RSU Number Two, 516,459. Don't laugh, Mark. State of Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles, 3,962. State of Maine IF&amp;W, 1,617. Vision Government, that's the assessing software we use, 8,992. For a total of $738,354.53.
I make a motion, we approve, uh, warrant number eight for fiscal year 2324.
I'll second that.
So this is a motion by Ken, second by Chris to approve uh, warrant number eight fiscal year 22, 2324. All those in favor? Thank you. Thanks for, uh, I have to go into an executive session.
Before you do that, can, can I ask, would you like, would you like Tom to attend? The, he's the union steward, would you like him to come to the first part of the of the labor negotiation part so he can pitch his side? If, if you want to invite him in, you can, if you
Absolutely.
So if you want that one first and then we can, does that make sense?
I'd like to invite Dave Shaw on the second item of the, uh, item 12.
That is, that's your I honestly don't know the answer to that. I don't know if you're allowed to.
You can't call a witness? It was a planning board decision. He was, he was involved in, well, I don't want to say anything about being session, but.
I don't want to tell you what to do. I just don't know the answer, Joe. I don't know, because those are typically confidential to the board only. I don't know if you're allowed to invite people. I don't know the answer to that.
It's calling a witness, somebody who's got specific knowledge of, of that property.
But, but we, we actually have that knowledge because you said that to me.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then I, uh, I said to the
Yep.
The, the, I thought that would be appropriate.
I'm not saying you can, I'm just saying I don't know. Never had anybody brought in other than, than either the treasurer or the manager. I've never seen that, but it doesn't mean it, it doesn't.
If, if we're not having a conversation in front of a witness, right, it's just a answering, answering a question about certain facts.
We're going to get information from him and then we'll deliberate when it's not, not in the room.
Okay. Sounds reasonable. So Dave, you mind hanging around?
I guess.
Okay, you need, uh, the zone of silence?
I'm first anyway, right?
Uh, no, we're gonna do, we're gonna do the other.
We're gonna do it backwards.
I was first.
If you make a, a motion, I'll move everybody out of the room.
Before I did that, I just wanted to know the listening, reading by the items. Uh, I was wondering if there were any questions about what's going on over there, over there in that building. We're just gonna answer all your questions.
Answer all the questions, maybe.
Where do we stand?
Um, where do we stand? They're getting ready to finish buttoning up. Uh, the roof is done. They're finishing the last hole on the other side of the building where they took off the addition, where he went into the addition. Those are getting bricked, so it will be weather tight. All the new windows are in.
With the batching bricks from them.
We had, we saved on this side, on the vis, the side that's visible, we used the bricks from the chimney. On the opposite side, there wasn't enough, so we're using mortar struck bricks on the other side because it's, it's not visible. And it's a little easier to use new bricks than over there, so that's where we are. Getting ready to move inside. CMP process.
Start the moving.
No, um, we actually, yeah, we, the Nickerson O'Day has been absolutely positively amazing, saving us everything they could possibly save to have the next, um, uh, we just did a little change order and, you know, the money that we've been able to save, um, we're gonna be able to get inside and get, uh, electricity run with quote temporary, but not temporary lights. They aren't going to be pigtails, but there's going to be lights in there. They can work inside, um, and probably, um, insulation and sheet rock, probably not mud yet. That's a big dollar part, so we'll be able to at least have it done, and, uh, we're working on grants. Steve Eldridge is working on several different grants for us right now, so hopefully if those come rolling in, we'll have Warren go forward, so.
Did you want to say that you have the tower?
Oh, well, Handel Brothers gave us an amazing bid of $3,300 to clad the dome in copper. $3,300 to do the work and put the copper on the dome, so.
It's now like an $80,000 budget for that.
Yeah, so we'll be able to back off some of that, but the bell still needs to be restored, but the dome will be, um, clad in copper, so that's kind of a neat thing.
Really, that's amazing.
Yeah, it's gonna look great, so. Yep. So that's that. All right.
So, so you want that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for labor negotiations um, pursuant to 1 MRSA Section 40560.
So do the, you can do the other one.
And, um, for also pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 8412.
Second.
All those in favor?